Okay, seven o'clock. I'd like to call to order the Board of Newtown Township Supervisors meeting of March 10th, 2021 via Zoom. And as we have been doing, I'd like to just say a few words that we would remember all those who have been affected by this horrible virus and their families. And those on the front lines, doctors, nurses, EMTs, police, fire, and all those who answer their call to duty unselfishly. And those everyday important essential workers, the garbage collectors, the supermarket workers, food servers, just to name a few. And here in our township, our management, our administrative staff, our public works department, together they keep our township running. Let us support our local businesses the best we can, and please don't forget to tip well. And most of all, let us treat people with respect and kindness, even if we don't agree with them and they don't agree with us. Together as a community, we will be stronger when this is all over. If we could just bow our heads for a couple of seconds. If everyone would recite the pledge allegiance with the board. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which, United States of America.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Lewis, any changes or additions to the agenda tonight?
There are no changes or additions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Get to my agenda here. No special actions. I guess we'll go into our first session of public comment. Anyone who would like to make a comment on anything that is not on the agenda, please raise their hand and I will call on you. Let me get to the second screen here. Okay, I do not see any hands up. Okay. We have no minor approvals, no public hearings. We'll go into our reports from officials, boards, and committees. Do we have any committee reports tonight, Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Chairman, there are no committee reports on the agenda.
I will go into members, board members comments. And I'd like to say something tonight, especially after our last meeting. I think that some things should be said. And we did receive a letter, actually the day after that meeting, that I think should be read. And it goes, Dear Supervisors, on behalf of the Eagle Ridge Board of Directors, I would like to thank you for approving the Arcadia Township Settlement Agreement. In that regard, I want to comment on Dave Sanders' role, since he was severely criticized by some people participating in a public comment section of the meeting. Although Dave was a convenient whipping boy, I would have recommended the settlement, even if the plan had not been deemed approved. Given the uncertainty that would result from the land use appeal, that would certainly have been filed by Arcadia from a denial of a tentative plan, I would also encourage the parties to explore the settlement. You were able to negotiate a settlement that resulted in more than 20% reduction in the number of homes that were proposed, an agreement to have all the homes be single-family dwellings, both of which are very significant. Furthermore, PennDOT indicated that it would approve the U-turn at Buck Road, Milpon Road, Diamond Drive intersection, once the tentative plan was approved. So there was no way of eliminating that possibility. You were able to negotiate a multi-tiered approach to the U-turn alternative, which begins with the developer's agreement to pursue a right-in, right-out entrance to the bypass, which would eliminate the necessity of the U-turn movement. That huge accomplishment, that was a huge accomplishment. I do not know whether Arcadia will be able to secure the permit for that entrance, but just simply getting the agreement was very important. Unfortunately, some in the community did not understand that. In summary, the township did an excellent job in negotiating the settlement agreement, which included a number of important concessions which benefited both Eagle Ridge and Newtown Crossing. And as I said at the outset, I would have encouraged a settlement regardless of whether there was a deemed approval or an appeal for the denial. And that coming from Harrison Harris, Steve B. Harris, the attorney who represented Eagle Ridge in this matter. Now, I also have a few other things because I think there was a lot of miscommunication the other night, and I just wrote some things down. I was asked by a resident why I wouldn't vote no, and 15 years ago or some odd, I did vote no. Well, maybe he should have been paying attention because I voted no for all four plans of Arcadia. It went into litigation from the first plan, which was only about 30 homes. And the reason that it went into litigation was due to some interference by some supervisors. Three following plans were denied and also went into litigation citing supervisors not being open-minded. The development was always questioned due to access. There were four plans showing different accesses. One was the existing service road. Two would have been a cut through to High Street, which was denied. But interestingly, a resident did approach Arcadia and was willing to sell his home if that was the case. Third one would have been a cut through through the Woodery area, which was a PennDOT and a Bucks County Planning Commission suggestion, but the HOA did not approve that. And then, of course, PennDOT approved the U-turn, which is what we're talking about recently. The settlement agreement has other options that were all agreed upon by the HOAs involved as an alternative. Nothing was going to stop this builder from building. No mistake or any kind of written problem. It was not an all or nothing situation. But it was time to negotiate. And the builder was willing to cooperate. Mr. Sanders did not cause this to happen, no matter what you were told. It was going to happen. Your boards led by Mr. Shoner and Mr. Ancona were instrumental in getting this agreement taken care of. With no solutions, if the board were to vote no, do you think it would have been a better situation? Maybe 76, 80 homes instead of 60? And the only access out would have been the U-turn, no options? My question is to anyone who thinks no was the solution, what then would they say to their neighbors when they got more homes and no other possibilities of an exit? Oh, and just to think, the original plan only had 30 homes. That's all. I'll throw it to Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to add to that. Thank you. I do have a couple of things to report about committees. The Joint Zoning Council met last Thursday, and they're moving along on the comprehensive plan, and they're deciding how to incorporate information and input from the EACs, the Environmental Advisory Councils from each township. And Newtown's EAC has like a 10-page document, so that's good. Also, at the Joint Zoning Council meeting, it was reported that an audit was done of the finances. We want to thank, and they wanted to thank Warren Kaiser and Richard Weaver for performing that audit. It was a clean audit. And the reason I'm giving the report is because our treasurer, Mr. Mack, you know, I wanted to embarrass him and tell him he did a good job. So then the other thing that I'd like to report on is that the Finance Committee is planning to, they've actually prepared a list of discussion points to discuss with the board, and we plan on meeting with the board on Monday's work session. So we look forward to that. And our chairwoman will be getting that list out to everyone either this evening or tomorrow morning, that list of discussion points, basically four. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. For that, I did spend an hour and a half on that audit. But Dick and Warren, it was pretty interesting. I'm glad I kept all the records. I have a couple of things. Tomorrow, March 11th, marks the one-year anniversary of the passage of the Newtown Board of Supervisors of the Love is Love Resolution in support of the LGBTQ plus minority youth. And I'll be meeting via Zoom with several local activists, including Kevin Antoine, who's the Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer at the Bucks County Community College, and the new chair of the Newtown Township's Human Rights Commission to celebrate this event. Other than that, I attended the March 8th Environmental Advisory Council meeting, and there were lots of issues discussed there. Number one was a proposal by a Eagle Scout, Michael Thomas Wisnewski, I think. He wants to paint again on the Sycamore Street, the drains with little decals saying that this leads to wildlife, so be careful about littering and throwing stuff down the drains. The council was okay with that. They just had some questions about how environmentally safe was the paint, and he'll be working on that. The other major discussion item concerned native plants, and the council wanted to be sure that, you know, new development includes the provision that if there are new plantings, that they be native plants. And I'm sure the township planner is aware of that, and we just want to make sure we mention that when we talk about new development. As you know, on March 20th, at 10:00 a.m., there'd be a special EAC Zoom meeting that would be a presentation by the Bucks Audubon Society, entitled Survival by Degrees: Climate Change and Birds. There are over 300, nearly 400 bird species that are in danger of becoming extinct due to climate change according to the Audubon Society. And this webinar will talk about what can be done to help mitigate these impacts. So you can still register for that on the township website. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Do we have any report that Mr. Davis would have given, or Mr. Lewis? You know, he usually gives the park and rec report.
I can pull up the park and rec report, Mr. Chairman. If Mr. Oxley wants to go first, give me a second.
Okay, Mr. Oxley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. EDC met last week, Thursday. We had special guest Bob Cormac from the Bucks County Economic Development Corporation, where we were discussing certain grants that are coming down from the state to the counties, specifically the CHIRP grant, which stands for, so I have to make sure I say this correctly, COVID-19 Hospitality Industry Recovery Program. So it's about $145 million in funding that will be coming down to local counties in Pennsylvania. So we're looking forward to sharing that information with local business organizations here in Newtown, the NBA specifically, and hoping to also see if we can put that on the website of the township in order to just make sure all businesses that can take advantage of this grant can have access to information that way. There's also some discussion about the LERTA, once again, and how we're going to go about developing that, and how we'd have to go about it from two different municipalities, districts. So that was just a little bit more discussion around that. But in all, we also did welcome a new member, George Gladani, former chair of the Finance Committee to the Economic Development Committee. George is very passionate, has a lot to offer, and we're looking forward to his new ideas, especially around helping small businesses here in Newtown. I know that was a lot of passion he had when we meet at seven o'clock in the morning, when we had EDC and Finance Committee meetings along with Mr. Peters. So that's my report there. I'd like to ask, Mr. Chairman, we do have our chair, Matt Peters, from the Economic Development Committee here. I wonder if it's possible he could shed a little bit more lighter, have a few comments?
Sure. Matt, do you have something to say?
You're on mute, Matt.
You're on mute.
Okay, so there we go. It says the host is not allowing you to unmute yourself, so got that taken care of. So we also got some updates from the local business organizations, our liaison reports from the NBA and the NBCA as well, and some outlines. Mr. Cormac, who is on our Economic Development Call, is actually going to be speaking at an upcoming Newtown Business Association breakfast meeting as well. So we're also doing a great job with maintaining the connections with the local business organizations to help and also to help facilitate the communication that will help with grant and other opportunities for the local business community as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Oh, I guess throwback to Mr. Lewis. Do you have a report?
Yeah, I have the report, Mr. Chairman. So as far as the park and rec report goes, registration is open for six-week summer camps. Space is limited, so register early. Upcoming programs with park and rec include intermediate archery, Saturday morning art series, sewing, and kids yoga. Pre-registration is required for all programs, so you can register at newtownfund.com.
Thank you. Also, I just want to say if anyone is wondering why Mr. Davis is not here, he did have a minor, not minor, but a medical setback, and he couldn't make the meeting tonight. So we all wish him a speedy recovery and back to our meetings. So get well, Kyle. Thank you. I guess we move on to land development. I don't know if this would be Mr. Sanders taking this one here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be happy to frame a motion for our first item, which is the Nerrocar subdivision at 12 Eldridge Road. This is a, again, a final plan for a minor subdivision. May I frame a motion, and then we'll have discussion and questions by the board?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, if the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to grant minor subdivision approval for the Nerrocars at 11 Eldridge Road. The proposal is to divide an existing 6.6-acre lot into two lots of 3.02 and 3.58 acres for construction of one single-family detached residence on each lot with one shared access driveway. Approval of the plan is given subject to the applicant's compliance with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall comply with the review letters from Remington and Vernick Engineers dated January 21st, 2021, and there were two separate letters with that date from Remington-Vernick, and also the CKS Engineers Letter of January 27th, 2021. Second, that the following waivers are hereby approved by the Board of Supervisors from the following sections of the Newtown Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance. First, Section 22-202 of the SALDO, allowing a common driveway to serve two residential lots. And secondly, a waiver from Section 22-5082 to allow a 10-foot-wide access driveway where 12 feet is required. Third, compliance with the recommendations of the township engineer for inclusion in the final plan for lot dimensions, signature block for the land surveyor, tie-ins to all adjacent street intersections, verification of the gas valve on Plan Sheet 3, showing gas tanks on Sheet 3, and depiction of the location of existing water, of an existing water service well on the property. Four, a fee in lieu of open space must be paid in full prior to the signing of final plans, and they're being recorded. Five, any and all fees and costs due and owing to Newtown Township for professional reviews and other reimbursable expenses must be paid in full by the applicant prior to the signing of final plans, and they're being recorded. And finally, prior to the issuance of a building permit for the first dwelling unit, the developer shall enter into a development agreement, financial security agreement, and stormwater operations and maintenance agreement if those agreements are determined to be required by the township. And that is the extent of the motion.
Is everything acceptable to Mr. Blackburn?
Yes, those conditions would be acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second here.
Okay. Any board members, would you like to see the plan up on our screen here? Just to see what it is?
That may be helpful.
Micah, can you do that?
I can, Mike, if you'd like. I think.
Mr. Blackburn, go ahead. You have it.
I have it all queued up for you.
We're in trouble now.
Yeah, so good evening again. Joe Blackburn from Whistler Perlstein, here on behalf of the applicants, Doctors Mina and Aneel Naruka, with respect to their application concerning the property at 12 Eldridge Road. The subject property consists of approximately 6.67 acres, is located in the CM Conservation Management Zoning District, and is presently improved with a single-family detached dwelling. Applicant proposes as a part of tonight's application a minor subdivision, which would create a 3.02-acre lot, which would contain the existing dwelling, and a new 3.58-acre lot, which would be ripe for further improvement with an additional single-family detached dwelling as conceptually depicted on this plan. As you can see, the two dwellings would share access to Eldridge Road, which I would add is an undedicated township road, or an undedicated road, or a local road, I'm sorry. A municipal road, not a state road. So sharing access from a single driveway in order to minimize impervious coverage. Both properties would, well, one is, and both would be serviced by on-lot well and septic. And I'm pleased to report that, you know, both of these lots would be entirely in conformance with the Conservation Management Zoning District and all of its minimum lot requirements, yards, setback, impervious, you know, ag soils and woodlands disturbances. So this is, you know, an entirely buy-right plan with respect to all those zoning criteria. We are in mercy of both the township engineer, township traffic engineer, and township planners' various review letters. All the comments, candidly, all the comments in the township engineer's review letter are noted as already having been satisfied. So I don't know if there's anything to talk about there. You did hear Mr. Sanders reference two brief, or two minor waivers that are being sought, and those are in order to permit the two homes to take access from a single shared-use driveway, and for that driveway to maintain its current 10-foot width, whereas 12-foot would otherwise be required. So those are the two limited SALDO waivers that we're requesting. I am joined by Mark Havers, the project engineer, and I can make either myself or Mr. Havers available for any questions that any members of the board may have.
Any questions from the board?
I have questions that may relate to any native plants. I noticed in the CKS letter, they talk about a rain garden in Lot 2. Is that something required, or what exactly is a rain garden?
Right. Good, fair question. The rain garden is actually a stormwater management facility, Mr. Mack. So that is not a planting or a landscaping feature. It is a stormwater best management practice that is used to capture and infiltrate stormwater.
So will there be new plantings of trees and things like that, or?
None. There will be certain plantings in the rain garden, but they are of a water absorption, or are for water absorption purposes, and those plantings are prescribed. So, and there's no, you know, landscape plan proposed or required, so I can't say with any specificity if there would be any, you know, new plantings contemplated by, candidly, would be whatever the new homeowner wants to put in with respect to plantings.
Right. I guess we can only hope that they do the right plants. Thanks very much.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yes, I had a question about the 10-foot wide driveway. And it looks like we've gotten approval from the Fire Department. So I was just wondering, it looks like a nice straight driveway, but if you have cars coming from either direction on the occasion that that would happen, is there a place they can pull over?
There's, to your point, yeah, it's pretty straight, and we thought about that as well. You do have, you know, there may be a situation where you have a little bit of a standoff if you've got a car here and a car coming in. And, you know, we could just hope that, you know, someone waits and waves the other one on because to your point, at this point, no, there's no pull-off or designated pull-off area. We're, you know, trying to minimize the impervious to the maximum extent possible, and we feel that, you know, between this area, which would certainly be more than sufficient for two cars to pass, and, you know, on Eldridge, given the straight line of sight, that that wouldn't really be necessary.
Okay, just wanted to review that, and if there's a way to, if you need to in the future, maybe there's a bypass lane or something that you can, if it doesn't affect the impervious.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at.
I see you're looking down there at a chart.
Yeah. So we've got, it looks like we do have, so the driveway would be on Lot 1, so we've got a little bit, Mark, if I'm not mistaken, a little bit of additional there. Maybe we could do a little bump out or something? Is that Mark Havers?
We can definitely look at that. There's also existing trees and light poles along there that we have to try to avoid, but there's a possibility, maybe midpoint, doing a small pull-over or pull-off.
Yeah, so it is a tree-lined drive now, so we're certainly, you know, constrained. But yeah, we can sort of look at it, Mr. Fisher.
Okay, thank you. I did note that there were no other zoning issues, so yeah, it really is a buy rate, so good job.
Mix one in every now and then.
I have a question, actually, same thing in regards to the driveway. Is there some sort of agreement between the neighbors of who is going to maintain the driveway? And will that be continued into, uh, deed changes? As does someone in particular own the driveway more than the other? And in regards to the, uh, the bump out, I, I've seen ways where, I, I know you said there's trees and telephone poles, where that some sort of access or roadway can go around those. So the person coming out can go around and the person coming in, they would not even, you know, basically intersect with one another. But, but my main concern is when these homes are sold, to be a good neighbor, who is going to say they own it or don't own that long stretch of driveway?
And yeah. Uh, fair point. And, and I would imagine, uh, it would be, well, I don't, I don't imagine. It will be treated the same way that, um, we've recently treated the same situation in other projects, which the board is familiar with, which is, you know, via a shared use, uh, shared access driveway maintenance agreement, which, uh, would be a document recorded against the chain of title for both lots, entitling both property owners for the benefit, to have the beneficial use of that driveway and setting forth the respective maintenance obligations for that driveway. So as to, you know, um, clearly and concisely have it set forth within the four corners of a recorded instrument, um, off the township's plate certainly. And it'll, it'll be, you know, just like the, uh, you know, or very similar to that, which we did for, you know, the Canarco property on, off Eagle, the Serini one that we just did, candidly, directly across Washington Crossing. So yeah, if, to the extent, I, I honestly, I didn't hear if Mr. Sanders included that in his, um, as a condition to his approval, but that would probably be appropriate for inclusion as well as the recording of that document.
Based on those comments, Mr. Chairman, I do have two more, uh, conditions to add to approval. Um, and I would ask that the board, um, listen to these and, uh, the motion maker and seconder, um, will agree to, uh, amend their motion and second, uh, respectively. Uh, the seventh condition would be that the applicant shall use its best efforts to create, uh, a bump out along the driveway to account for the situation where two cars are approaching from opposite, uh, directions. Uh, and eighth would be that the applicant shall prepare, uh, and record a shared driveway agreement, uh, for, uh, lots one and two, uh, in a form satisfactory to the township.
And both of those would be acceptable as well.
Well, have a, uh, the first motion amendment?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, the second?
Yes, fine.
Okay. Motion second, uh, any further discussion from the board?
I just had a quick question, Mr. Chairman, about the entrance of the driveway. How does, um, Mr. Blackburn, say you've got one car, you know, about, about to exit, and then you've got one car to enter. Do you have wide enough space there for, so, you know, so we don't back up any type of traffic or cause a potential accident or anything like that?
Yeah, um, so with respect to traffic, first of all, there's, there's only one additional property further north on Eldridge Road. So we're certainly not going to be creating any sort of traffic there. But you'll see here, um, the, the existing flare out of the driveway apron, which would certainly allow. And then, um, this gray line is the edge of pavement. So you've got what you've got, if that's dimension 43, and that's probably, you know, maybe another 20 feet wide for Eldridge, you've got really 50 feet of width in that area to kind of maneuver two or more cars around. So I wouldn't anticipate that would be a problem. Um, I do know there was a comment about, uh, in, in one of the engineers', uh, review letters about some, some culvering under the driveway, which again, as well comply. But as far as the width of the apron, I think that's more than adequate for, uh, the, the maneuvering of the, the scenario that you just laid out. Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Any from the public? I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? This is 4-0.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next land development item this evening is the NAC, the Newtown Athletic and Aquatic Club at 120 Pheasant Run. Uh, this would be, if the board is of a mind, a motion to approve the amended final plan for the NAC at the, uh, address at 120 Pheasant Run to reduce the number of improvements contemplated in the original development plans. The current plan removes the athletic field that was located on parcel 29-10-135 and the public improvements that were part of that development and shows an actual addition to the main building. It further reflects the consolidation of parcels 29-10-137, 29-10-140, and 29-10-135. This approval is given subject to the applicant meeting the following conditions. First, the applicant shall comply with the, uh, review letters of Remington and Vernick Engineers dated January 6th, 2021, and January 8th, 2021. CKS engineers' letter dated December 18th, 2020, and the Bucks County Planning Commission's memorandum dated January 26th, 2021. Second, as-built plan sheets one and two shall be corrected. Three, the plan must be revised to show the addition to the main building. Four, parking calculations shall be provided pursuant to the variance received on May 7th, 2015 to reduce parking spaces to 668 on the plan. Fifth, uh, the plan, uh, the applicant shall revise the plan to provide a plan scale as, um, required by Section 22-403.1, point capital A, of the Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance. Make sure it is legible as well as containing typical dimensions for the amended parking spaces. Sixth, the lap pool and deck that have not been constructed will be removed from the table of proposed impervious surface area, and the variance received to allow greater impervious surface must be corrected to properly reflect the percentage of impervious coverage allowed by the variance. Uh, eighth, the plan shall be revised to show, uh, the relocation, I'm sorry, that 23 trees have been relocated on the property or the 23 new trees are proposed to be planted on the property. Uh, and finally, uh, ninth, any and all fees and costs due and owing to Newtown Township for professional reviews and other reimbursable expenses must be paid in full by the applicant prior to the signing of final plans and they're being recorded. Those are the conditions for this motion.
I see Mr. Marshall here. I guess, are they acceptable?
The only one that I would want to discuss is, I believe the applicant would like the board to consider granting a waiver for planting additional trees. They believe that it, it's already very well landscaped, and there really isn't any good place to put them without putting them in the fields and what have you. So we would request the board to consider a waiver of that condition. Uh, as to the parking, uh, question, I'm happy to go over that with the board if you want to hear it. Uh, it is, it will comply in terms of what Mr. Sanders said, but I'd be happy to go over the math if you're at all interested.
Let's tackle the first one in regards to the trees. I will, uh, open that up to the board. I know we have some, uh, tree lovers here. So, um, why don't, uh, why don't we get into that discussion?
I don't know if I, I love trees so much, but, uh, I like to see, uh, you know, more trees, not less, I guess. But, um, I was wondering why that was in the plan in the first place. And, um, I'm not quite sure why you can't plant trees in a field, but, uh, were.
I think some of it, Mr. Mack, may have had to do with the fact that the previous plan included an entirely separate lot that's being removed from this plan, if you follow me. The, the playing fields that we were putting in the fencing around it, that were on the neighboring lot, which was, uh, parcel 29-10-135, which is being removed by this modification.
So am I understanding basically that, um, because you wanted to put in an athletic field and a lap pool and deck, which you're not doing now, in the pre, in the original plan, you would have had to remove trees to do that, I assume? And so the original plan called for 23 new trees to replace the ones that were being removed. Was that the case?
I'd have to defer to the engineer on that. I don't know what had to be removed, uh, frankly, to be honest.
Well, I, I don't know where the 23 trees came into the picture here. Why are they in the picture at all?
Because they were the mathematics, because of the additions that were being done. The, essentially, I don't think it had to do with removals. It had to do with the landscape plan that was required.
So this landscape plan is no longer required, but it is required, but you're asking for a waiver?
Actually, I think most of the landscaping's all installed. The mathematics has to do with 23 trees that were going to be relocated. And, uh, and I think we would rather not have to do that if we don't have to.
Right. I get it. And landscaping, you said, has already been done?
That, yeah, this, this land development, with the exception of what's being removed, is, is completed for all intents or, or well, well along.
Yeah, Mr. Mack, this is a, this is an amended, their, their final plan was recorded, the, certain improvements were built. Others that were shown on that recorded plan are not going to be built, the playing field and the, the, uh, lap pool and deck. This plan is to remove those so that what is recorded in Doylestown reflects actual field conditions.
And also, it also gives up our right to build that in the future unless we would ever come back to you again.
You'd have to come back and get added to a new plan.
Yeah, that's cool.
I'm sorry, I don't remember all the details of the old plan. Can you just go over again what the addition to the building is? Uh, that's still included, right?
Yes. Don, do you want me to, uh, answer that?
Yeah, please, if you would.
Sure. There's, uh, an administrative section of the building that's, that was originally added to the design back in, uh, 2000, what, 14, uh, 15? The, um, uh, included in that is also a two-story addition that expanded and improved the, um, locker rooms and allowed for the expansion of some studios on the second floor.
Okay, now I remember. Thanks very much.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, I will tell you that I actually have written on my notes for this, "I like trees." So I didn't love, love trees, but I like trees. Uh, I, I guess, I, I would just wonder if, uh, even a dozen trees can be planted somewhere, even in, on, um, a, another location somewhere in a township. It won't keep me from voting for it, but, uh, it'd be, be a nice gesture.
Oh, don't, don't give away your cards, Dennis.
Well, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Worthington and Mr. New, uh, Dumack, but I suspect that if the township wanted 12 trees somewhere planted elsewhere, we could agree to that.
Well, how, how about, I, I like Dennis's idea, but how about instead of 12 trees? I, we maintain the 23 trees, which could be put into what we've done in the past, the tree bank. And as we see the need for trees throughout the township, we could take them out of that tree bank. I mean, it would still, it would still, uh, be the 23 trees. And, uh, but you wouldn't have to replace or plant them in the location that they are now. But have it in a tree bank available to the township, because we're, we're always in need of trees, that, that, that's for sure. But I guess that would be, uh, for Mr. Worthington to, to this, to, uh, discuss.
I like that idea.
Is Jim on?
He's on. He just unmuted. No.
Um, I think there's, well, and look, I have no problem donating anything. I mean, that's, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're clear, though. I think a lot of stuff with the trees, we're, we're talking about, Mr. Mack asked about it, like where the pool deck was supposed to be. That's, that was in an area that was just an existing, it's a concrete deck now. There's no, there's no trees there now. Uh, uh, all these things that were, um, the, the place is really overgrown with trees. If you go buy, buy it and take a look, particularly around the fieldhouse, they're literally on top of each other. And the reason why you don't put them out, um, in the open field is that where, that's where the kids play, kickball and things like that. So you'd have a liability issue on that north field where you got the basketball court and stuff like that. But if you want me to put trees somewhere, I have any problem with that. I just, you know, there's just nowhere to put them. I love trees as much as anybody. So, uh, I would love to put more trees there if we could find a place to put them. But I, I like your idea, Phil, if, you know, if, if, if you got places you want to put some trees, we'd love to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think, you know, for example, I know there are people in, uh, around, uh, Roberts Ridge Park who already, uh, e- each donated, including myself, $70 to plant the tree. Uh, there's always a need for more trees around, especially since we're going to be, uh, complying with MS4. We need to control the wastewater management. And Roberts Ridge Park has a basin there that if there were trees surrounding that basin more, would add to the, uh, um, solving that problem. So.
Well, you know, Roberts Ridge is a, is a little bit dear to my heart. I'm not sure you're aware of this, but, uh, both myself and John Kardisco raised the money for that through my foundation, Have a Heart for that Playground. So that, that, that was the playground we put in in Newtown, as well as a couple other municipalities. So I'd love to put some trees at Robert Ridge. I might even carve my initials in one of them.
Yeah.
No, you don't do that. You can't do that.
Just hug the tree.
If, if it was, be satisfactory to the board if Mr. Sanders had meant, uh, changes his motion for us to make a contribution of the equivalent of 23 trees to your tree bank, that will be acceptable.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, um, revising, uh, Condition 8 in its entirety, uh, to remove the reference to the, showing the relocation of 23 trees, et cetera. Uh, just to read, the applicant shall donate 23 trees to the Township Tree Bank.
That's fine.
That's great. Good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. I won't hold it against you that you mentioned John Kardisco's name.
If I could, if I can quickly just give you a quick thumbnail on the parking thing, I think I can put that to bed pretty quickly.
And I, Don, can I ask the question in regards to that? Maybe, maybe my question will be what you're going to tell me, but, but I, I'm, I'm just looking, I'm just looking at the calculations and it, it's kind of baffled me, but I'm sure there's an explanation. When it says the approved plan received the variance in 2015 to, to provide 760 parking spaces.
706, 706.
706, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, this is what caught my attention. In lieu of 4,221, and then it goes on to say, because of the size, 40,900 square feet, it then drops to 668. Now, now I'll let you explain that.
Well, actually, a couple of changes to that. Number one, the actual, and it will be shown on the final plan that's presented to you for signature, has 691 spaces, uh, of which it has all the handicaps and what have you. The previous variance granted 3,624 parking space relief. With these removals, the new plan would grant 3,438 parking space relief, or essentially 186 less relief than we got by the previous variance. The 691 we have is in fact, less of the variance than we already got for the property, based on the square footage. Now, I get you, 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 uh, caused me to make a comment because I know it is a baffling number. I think I would point out that when the original joint zoning ordinance was enacted, recreational uses had a mathematical computation of one space for every 50 square feet, plus one per employee. The problem is that the NAC is not a bowling alley. The NAC is a big expansive thing. And so when you start doing the mathematics and you have to put one space in for every 50 square feet, when you're including the locker rooms and everything else, you come up with this 4,000 huge number. when you're including the locker rooms and everything else, you come up with this four thousand huge number, which I think we all can agree is way beyond what anybody would ever need. It is an extreme variance, but I think it arises out of the fact that the NAC is sort of an unusual animal in terms of the uses that are there. Because it's defined as one for fifty square feet for recreational areas, you're, you're counting all kinds of things that aren't producing parking essentially.
Thank you.
I don't know if that helps or not.
Yeah, well, I'll take your word for it. Uh, Mr. Sander did form a motion. Do I have a, actually someone to make the motion of Mr. Sanders' stipulations there?
Make the motion.
Have a second?
Second, man.
I have a motion to second. Any further questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Passes four zero.
Thank you very much. All of you stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, let's see. Well, we're actually on to the engineer's report. Leanna?
Right, thank, thank you. First item tonight is financial security release number one for Fred Beans Ford. We've inspected the work to date, and we recommend the township release the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty cents to the developer.
Hey, do I have such a motion?
So moved.
No second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any questions from the board on this, this motion here?
They still got a bunch of work to do, don't they, to expand the showroom area?
They do, yep. They're about halfway done, probably so, yeah.
And I notice there's over two hundred thousand left, so. That's mine.
Yeah, any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? All right, those passes four zero.
The next item is also financial security release number one. This is for the Village of Newtown redevelopment. We've also inspected the work completed, and we recommend that the township release the amount of three million one hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents to the developer.
Such a motion?
I moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have motion to second. Any questions from the board on this motion?
We have money still left for that?
There is, yep. There's about a little over three hundred thousand dollars left to cover the remaining items and any contingency items as well, so.
I, I had a question. Did they have an agreement for a post-development meeting? Is that part of our agreement? And I guess the three hundred thousand would make, make sure that they do that.
It would, yep. They have the, in the agreement, they have to do the post-development traffic study. So, you know, this money is still being held, you know, so that won't get released until they provide everything that's required in the agreement.
Do we know when, we know when they're going to do that traffic study?
Um, I think they're waiting. They submitted revised plans for us to review for potentially reconfiguring the Bank of America Starbucks area. So we're currently reviewing that. So my I guess that they're gonna probably work on that, you know, once that plan is either approved or we discuss it with them.
Okay, yeah, I, I heard from some residents that they had people out there occasionally trying to redirect traffic because it was so congested.
Yeah, that's what they're trying to do. So the plan that they presented, and again, we're still reviewing it. It hopes to sort of elongate that area so that there's less of the backup there, so that people don't have to direct the traffic.
Yeah, any further questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
I, I, opposed, passes four zero.
Well, I had two other quick items that weren't on the agenda, if that's okay, just quick updates. The road program, we will be opening bids next week, so hopefully at the next meeting I'll have a recommendation for that to move forward. The other item is that there's a few grants that are available in the coming months. I presented a, a little memo to the board earlier this week. The township is required through the MS four program to implement projects over the next five years. I know we've touched on them before. There's basin conversions that are proposed, as well as some stream bank restoration. So I think a few of these grants through DCD and DCNR might be a good way to go. So I just wanted to present that information, kind of talk about next steps. You know, for us to do some cost estimates and some preliminary design in order to move forward for these grant applications to make it look like a great project to get some funding for.
I had, I had an idea. We, I think this was discussed a little bit at the environmental committee to get possibly some of our advisors from that committee somehow involved in the, the proposal. I know you'll do a great job, but is that something that we can arrange somehow?
Yeah, that's something that we can look at. I know a lot of times there can be, you know, there's township match required. That can be an in-kind sort of service, so that can be, you know, volunteer hours through people from the organizations, and that could be some way to be involved as well.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't know about what has to be written into the grant, what kinds of details, you know. So if it has anything to do with the environment, which I guess this does, uh, you know, perhaps our advisors can get involved, much as we've tried to get our financial people involved in the budgetary process, so that might be helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, Leanna?
That's it for me tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only item on our solicitor's report this evening is consideration by the board of a resolution to approve an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the township and Newtown Borough. This involves the bidding of a contract to do roadwork that includes Sterling Street, a portion of which is located in the township and a portion of which is located in the borough. An intergovernmental cooperation agreement was drafted, providing for the terms of that agreement whereby the township will bid and manage the award of the contract. And Newtown Borough will be responsible for the costs associated with paving Sterling Street in the borough. Instead of bidding separate contracts, we thought that since they're doing the street, we might as well get it done in one fell swoop. Uh, under the intergovernmental cooperation law, a resolution is required to approve that intergovernmental agreement. So that is what is before you this evening. I will note that Newtown Borough approved the intergovernmental agreement last night and adopted its resolution. So it is before the board this evening, and if the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to adopt the resolution approving an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the township and the borough for the paving of Sterling Street.
Hey, do I have such a motion?
I moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Mr. Sanders, is, in, in this agreement, is there a, a cost mentioned?
Well, there are several reimbursement factors. The, the cost of the contract is yet to be determined because that will have to be bid. So the township will do the bidding process, award the contract to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, and then the borough will reimburse us their portion of the contract. There are a couple reimbursements in here. The borough is paying the township seven hundred fifty dollars to have the township bid and award the contract. That goes toward the costs of, of doing that. And also the borough will pay the township three hundred fifty dollars to manage the project and conduct inspections until the completion of the project and the expiration of the maintenance bond. So those numbers were developed by and agreed to by the township engineer and the township staff.
And, and how, how is it determined what, I mean, what would the calculation be in regards? How much roadway would we be doing for the borough?
I, I think it's a fairly small portion, Leanna. Do you know exactly how many linear feet or square feet there are in the borough?
It's about two hundred linear feet of road. It, it's not a lot. It's a really small portion of that stream, so.
And then whatever, whatever, based on the bids, that's what they would, that's what they would reimburse us on that.
Proportionally, yes.
Okay, gotcha. Uh, any other questions from the board on this? From the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
I, I, I oppose, passes four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our report.
Thank you. On to the manager's report. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of today is two million four hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. The plan expiration is before the board with no action required, and we have Chief Hearn to give his monthly police report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening. February police report for two thousand twenty-one, we documented one thousand five hundred and sixty-seven calls for service. We logged just under twenty-four thousand patrol miles on our vehicles. In the month of February, we did have twenty-seven, unfortunately, eighteen of them were DUI related, for narcotics, free warrants from Hamilton, New Jersey, Ben Salem Township and Horsen Township, a possession, theft and three frauds. Notable jobs, we had sixteen cases referred to our detective division. We had three death investigations. One was natural, one was narcotic related, and unfortunately, one was a family member of a Buckingham Police officer. Uh, we had a catalytic converter theft. They continue to plague the various townships in Bucks County. So if you see something overnight, somebody sliding underneath a car or whatever, make sure you call the police department. We are currently investigating that. We continue to have frauds, a massive amount of frauds in the township and across the county. A lot of schemes involving grandparents and your grandchild has been arrested, and we're looking for bail money. Grandparents are withdrawing finances and money out of their savings account and being schemed out of their finances. So please talk to your parents, talk to your grandparents, make sure that these frauds are stopped. Do not provide your information out to your phone at, at all. Um, on two twenty-three, we had a, what's called a squatting call. If you recall, we had one of those last year regarding a, an ordinance and hostages being held in the residence in Newtown Township. We had a quick response by our agency. We contacted the owner, verified it was not actually founded. It was unfounded. It's a call being made through a, an app on your phone, which bounces the phone to different numbers, and we cannot trace the phone. The feds are actually assisting us trying to locate that particular number. And if you recall, on two twenty-eight, we did have a bomb scare as well at Council Rock North High School. That was also unfounded. It was an outstanding response by our agency, as well as several other agencies in the area. The FBI is currently assisting us also with that investigation because it looks like it may be from a different area of the country that the call came from, and the VPN number is coming back to your location. So it's, it's obviously going on across the country. I just want you guys aware of it, so if we, there's police activity, it may be that. We don't know yet. We're fifty-eight traffic crashes, five injuries, twenty-two non-injuries, thirteen deer, hundred and seventy-two traffic citations were issued, and a hundred and sixty-six warnings. Uh, we did have an outstanding job this month. I just want you also aware that it's been posted on the news about the theft from autos. If you recall last year and throughout the early part of this year, overnight theft from autos were occurring by unlocked cars. Through one of our detectives, Joseph Camp, in coordination with Buckingham Township Police Department and other municipalities, we were able to locate a gentleman from Garley Borough. He is currently being charged with, I believe, over a thousand theft from auto jobs. So it's an outstanding job by one of your own detectives, Detective Camp. Uh, we had two truck enforcement details, did an outstanding job with that. Park Avenue up in Wrightstown, we handled a speed enforcement detail. For our public service announcements, our three snow emergencies, there was no police department issues. I want to commend our DPW staff for their great work during the storms. On March fourth this month as well, we hired Police Officer Lauren Mystic. She was sworn in on March fourth. She is a student, uh, she was a student in our local schools. She graduated our DARE program back in the day. She is a graduate of Council Rock North High School. She's a resident of Newtown for twenty-two years. She has an associate's degree at Bucks County Community College, and she graduated the Monco Police Academy. She's currently in our STO program. So I'd like to also thank Judge Petrusi for administering her oath the other day. Um, I mentioned the frauds already, our Mert, Newtown Mert officer, major incident response team officers are securing the COVID vaccination sites. One's actually here in Newtown at the Bucks County Community College. We have our drug takeback scheduled for April twenty-fourth, so any prescription medications you want to dispose of, please drop them off accordingly. And our two thousand twenty annual report is on the township website, so feel free to take a look at it. You happy to answer any questions you may have?
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for the chief?
No, I just want to say, it sounds like you had a busy month. Thank you, Chief. I just had a question about some minor things later when, with the bills. Are you gonna hang around for a few minutes?
Yeah, I'll be able to answer for you, John. No problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, I just have a question on this, uh, you say catalytic, catalytic converter thefts?
That's correct.
Are, are there any, like, particular cars that they're targeting? Because I, I've had my catalytic converter, you know, changed, and boy, it, it took the mechanic ten hours to do it. I mean, are, are there cars that are quicker to take them out of?
There are certain cars that are actually more valuable in the metals that are contained within that catalytic converter. That's where the, the money comes in at. They usually handle a hit old Hondas, old Toyotas. They also been hitting U-Haul trucks and church vans that are in parking lots for extended periods of time. Usually it occurs when nobody's around. You have a van parked in the back parking lot. It'll go three, four days before it's discovered, and that's where the reports start coming in. So then we have to backtrack for video surveillance. We did post two videos out on our Crime Watch webpage for the identification of a particular car and, and gentleman that are doing it. That investigation is ongoing.
Thanks, and I'd like to congratulate the new officer. I'm sure she'll be a, a great addition, and maybe one day we can get her on a Zoom, or hopefully when we get back live, so we could all congratulate her and, and wish her a great career here in Newtown Township.
Thank you, sir.
I have no further, anyone else have any questions for the chief?
Just thank you for the report.
You had a busy month. Thanks, Chief. Okay. Mr. Lewis, I still think you're up.
Thank you, Chief. I have one other item under my report, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, Comcast provides internet and phone services to the Township Administration, fire, public works and police buildings. We had recently looked at some stuff with the, the existing contract and found areas where we could save some money. And also upgrade the speed of the internet for the police department. So the, the previous amount that we paid Comcast was a thousand forty-eight dollars per month. The updated service contract that was provided to the board in this packets is for nine, nine hundred and eighteen dollars a month with the upgraded speed to the police department. So the appropriate motion would be motion to approve the two-year Comcast, Comcast service contract extension for the, for, for two years.
Hey, do I have such a motion?
So.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Nice. So we're, we're doing better off for a two-year contract, correct? I mean, that's usually a two-year contract, is what they say.
Yeah, we're getting a little bit better service for the police department with the speed of their internet and saving. Little over a hundred bucks a month.
Any other questions from the board?
In thirty.
Okay, from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
I, I, any opposed? Passes four zero.
That's all I have under my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Mack, the minutes, bills, list and reports?
Okay, the exciting portion of the meeting. I make motion that we approve the minutes of the February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one regular Board of Supervisors meeting.
I have a motion to have a second?
Okay.
Motion and second. Any questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? I, any opposed? Passes four zero.
Okay, I now move that we approve the payment of our bills according to the bills list dated March tenth, two thousand and twenty one totaling two hundred and forty two thousand, three hundred and seventy nine dollars and fifty five cents.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions from the board?
I, I just have a little question, maybe for the chief. There was a, a charge there of two thousand, two hundred and twenty four dollars and eighty cents for training. It says monthly training sessions. Can you give me a little bit more information about those sessions? Is this for this amount of money for the whole year of training or? I'm not clear on that.
This is a, a, a full year of consultant training from Chris Boyle Consultant Company. Chris Boyle was an attorney that worked for Divic, our insurance provider. He went out on solo, on his own. As a result of that, he offered police departments in the region an opportunity to sign on for ninety nine dollars per officer. He gave us a reduced rate of seventy four dollars and sixteen cents for officers for remaining twenty, twenty one, which for thirty cops was that twenty two hundred dollar number. Basically with that, he, every month, he provides legal updates and/or other critical relevant law enforcement information in an autonomy matter. To me, that twenty two hundred dollars will come back tenfold to the township if it prevents one, one prior incident. Usually we were, were required annually to do our MPO training commission where we get our legal updates a year after they're enacted. This provides us the opportunity to get it every couple of months. Plus he throws in additional sessions every month, such as duty to intervene, dealing with workplace harassment, discrimination, that type of things. Various critical elements. We have a powered DMS system that's in place for our contracted services. That information is tracked automatically. Every cop will get a notification that's in his inbox. The officer has to sign on for him. It's being progressive and staying in front of the curve instead of behind it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that information. So that's all I had about that.
Well, I think we, we have to vote on the bills list. That was questions from the board. Any other questions from the board on the bills list? From the public? Okay, seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? I, any opposed? Passes four zero. Okay, thank you, Mac.
Well.
No, I'm sorry. Interfund transfers.
Yeah. I move that we make it to fund transfers totaling two hundred and fifty three thousand, nine hundred and ninety six dollars and twenty one cents as per the bills list stated March tenth, two thousand and twenty one.
Okay, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
All right.
I, any opposed? Passes four zero. Now I thank you, Mister Mac. Move on to our second session of public comment. Anyone who would like to make a public comment, please raise their hand, and I will call on you. Okay, so you know, we'll go to old business. The only old business that I, I would ask the board is that with things, well, they say things are getting better, but I, I, you know, who knows? Is the board agreeable to still doing Zooms? Or would you like to continue live meetings in the future?
As I said in the past, and I think Perry Warren's trying to make it legal, that we continue to have Zoom meetings indefinitely because we've had about twenty seven people on this call, and usually when we have live meetings, there are crickets in the audience, so I think Zoom has been very helpful, or maybe some kind of combination of live and Zoom, so. I won't favor Zoom since we've now become experts, thanks to Olivia's work and, and Mister Lewis. I think they're very well trained in Zoom, and I've even asked Olivia for some pointers on how to handle a Zoom meeting.
Excellent, okay. I'm okay with Zooms, Mister Oxley.
I, I think at some point, you know, I'd love to get back into the building once we can get a little bit better handle COVID nineteen. I don't want to rule that out, make it, make Zoom this permanent meeting space. I think that there's an opportunity that, as we have had lots of residents that have voiced their opinions, I'd love to also get those residents to come into the building as well, and we can interact with each other once, once we're in a better place.
Right. And while I don't think we're ruling it out, I just think that if we want to make sure that when the time comes, everybody is safe, hopefully we'll all, you know, all have, be vaccinated and, you know, we could open up the building safely. Mister Fisher, your, your feeling?
My thought was for the next month or two, until people get, get the vaccinations and we get new guidelines from C, CDC about meetings and things, then yeah, I'm, I'm okay with continuing on Zoom.
Okay, very good.
I'd like to see, maybe we can bring this up probably in the next three months, two, three months, and see where we are then, and.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm good with that.
Okay, any, any other old business? Well, Dennis, I'll, I'll ask you, is there any, any more appointments to committees that we may have?
There are actually no, I, I did run across, I had a conversation. It was not official in any way. Someone who would might want to join a committee, so that was, I didn't even get to the point of encouraging them to send in a resume. It's kind of an informal thing. I did get, I, I think we all got a letter from one of the residents, Ms. Cox, suggesting the restoration of the traffic committee.
So I think, I think that's the, isn't that the joint?
Joint Traffic Committee, yes.
We, we'd have to talk to the borough to see if they have any for that also. But, but I mean, I, I, I don't, you know, I wasn't intending on appointing anyone tonight, but hopefully people will continue to send in their resumes. We still have some openings on.
There was one letter that came in for the technology committee. I forget the person's name, and so if that person was appointed and I spoke to the existing member, he would still like to be a member. And I think with the other ones, we potentially have four.
Yes.
Appointees could have four for the Technology and Communications Committee, which would make it a, a quorum, but obviously we would still like to have a couple of more people volunteer for that.
How about if the board appreciates this? I could do a list of the vacancies, so do a short, shortlist of the vacancies, because there's fewer, fewer and fewer as we go. And actually then incorporate this fourth person for the technology committee and form that in, in a motion for next, for next meeting.
Okay, well, give Olivia the information, and I'm sure she'll put it into our, our folders for appointees. Yeah, I'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Uh, any new business? Okay, seeing none, Mister Sander, we have no need for an executive session tonight?
No need, Mister Chairman. That's correct.
Okay, so I guess I'll just take a motion for adjournment?
Some of.
Okay, without exception, without the exception, we are adjourned. Everybody have a great night.
Take care.